Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'm Paul Smedberg, Chair of the WAMADA Board of Directors and one of Virginia's representatives. With me tonight is Randy Clark, Metro's General Manager and Chief Executive Officer, Jennifer Ellison, Metro's Board Corporate Secretary, Kimmy Feldbauer, Metro's Director of Strategic Transformation and Enterprise Collaboration, who will be giving tonight's presentation. I'm also joined by Alternate Director from Virginia, Bryna Helfer, and DC's Board Alternate This hearing is convened by the Metro Board of Directors to gather public comments on Metro's proposed strategic transformation plan, Your Metro, The Way Forward, which will guide the authority's strategy and decision-making over the next five years. This is our agenda tonight. We will begin with some background information, then move to an overview of the proposed plan, followed by an overview of the protocol for you to provide your comments. We will then listen to comments from the public, and finally, describe the next steps in the process. The draft strategic plan is available online at these links in the presentation. Two copies are also available in the hallway at the registration desk. Notice that this hearing was made by publication in The Washington Post, and ads were placed in El Afro, El Tiempo Latino, Washington Hispanic, Do Re, Epoch Times, The Korean Times, at Ref, and on social media. The hearing notice was also sent to all local governments and other organizations within the compact zone and area libraries, as well as posted on wamada.com. Before I ask staff to provide an overview of the plan, I'd like to briefly review different ways that you can provide testimony at tonight's hearing. There are three ways to provide testimony at tonight's hearing: in person, via Zoom, or over the phone. If you're with us in person and you'd like to provide testimony, please see staff at the registration table if you have not done so already. For those who have preregistered and joined via Zoom, we ask that you remain muted with your camera off until you're called on to speak. And those who are participating via phone, if you'd like to provide testimony, please press star three. Again, please press star three, and this will put you in the speaker's queue. Elected officials will be provided five minutes, and others will be allowed three minutes each. Extra time will be given for translation if needed. If you have copies of your testimony to distribute, please hand them to staff at the registration table. Also, if you'd like to note, we would also like to note that tonight's hearing is being broadcast live by YouTube on the Metro Forward YouTube channel, and will be archived there after the hearing concludes. Now that we have all the preliminaries out of the way, I'll turn the floor over to Metro's General Manager and Chief Executive Officer, Randy Clark, for a few remarks. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate you being here this evening and holding this hearing. Hello, everyone in the room. Thank you for being here, and hello, everyone online, for your time to participate in an important activity for Metro moving forward. Today is really about working towards the end part of a process which we've been working on, basically started in late July into August. And Kimmy Feldbauer is here, and she'll go through all kind of the process and how we worked it. A couple of fundamentals here that I think are incredibly important. An organization needs to prioritize things to get things done. And if a million things are priority, then nothing is a priority. And so, part of this exercise has actually been a way to very transparently, and I really highlight the word transparently, work with the customers, work with our community and key stakeholders, to figure out what the priorities of this regional asset are. So, I've said this very publicly, and I believe this deep in my soul, which is, this is a community's transit system. We, right now, as the General Manager and staff, and obviously the board with their role, have the privilege of operating or overseeing the system. But it's the community's system. And this process is to make sure that we are delivering the strategy and what needs to get done on behalf of the community through the community process. And I feel really good about this. I did a lot of this in Austin, very transparent, very public, and I really like where we're moving in Metro, in a culture that is more transparent and more engagement on an organic level. So, thank you for being here, both in public and virtually, to help be part of that process. This plan, as I mentioned, will lay out things and then transparently show measurements. And what we want to do is then use board meetings and other venues and online dashboards to show where we are, and be very honest about where we're doing well, when we're not doing well. And when we're not doing well, how do we then build a continuous, a culture of continuous improvement? Right? We're not going to be perfect. I've said that very openly. We're humans. We will make mistakes. We want to acknowledge mistakes. Hopefully, people feel that when there's a problem now, we are saying that earlier, we're talking about what it is. That way, we can move forward as a team. Lastly, I just want to highlight, we are making a lot of progress as an organization. We had a board meeting earlier today. We did our second quarter scorecard. A lot of green arrows going in the right direction. I think we were at 41% more trains running today, this week, than we were at the end of July. Yesterday was our second highest ridership day since the pandemic. We have the least amount of dropped bus trips since before pandemic. Our staffing, we hired 300 bus operators last year and trained and certified. Our capital program, our big yellow line shutdown, which I know is really annoying, especially some people in Virginia, is on schedule and on budget. We are going to get that open. Potomac Garden Station, I know the Chair especially, can't wait forward to the Potomac Garden Station. We are going to get that open. We've had the Silver Line opening, lots of things here at Metro. Top of mind, obviously, is safety and security. And I want to reassure everyone that's listening and in the room, there is nothing that this organization cares more about than our customers and our staff's safety. So, we have increased a lot of police patrols. I appreciate the mayor, the district mayor yesterday, and we're going to do more collaboration with MPD. We're looking at other jurisdictional partners as well. We got a lot of crisis intervention specialists we've hired, plus, we're really enhancing our camera system. I say all that for everyone to feel reassured that, I mean, we all came on the system over here today. I'm on the system every single day. Many people in this room are. I just want to double down that there are things that we don't have control over here at Metro. I think it's fair to say the larger gun policy and other things in society. But I want you all to know, from my lips to your ears, our personal commitment at Metro is your safety is paramount, and we are working on that every single day. So, with that, I'm going to hand it over to Kimmy Feldbauer. The Chair mentioned her title, but Kimmy has a really interesting role, not only to work with our consulting team and kind of tie everyone together on strategy, but the other part of her title is enterprise collaboration. And what's so important about that is, is to take a big, kind of really large legacy culture at Metro. We have 12,000 employees, and historically been pretty siloed. And Kimmy's job is to help kind of bring people together across the organization, and it's a little bit more about empowerment and bringing different parts of the organization together. And we're doing that via the plan. So, with that, Kimmy, why don't you take us through where we are with it? Thank you.
Thank you very much, General Manager Clark. Thank you, Chair Smedberg, and thank you to everyone here in the room, and everyone that's joined us from around the region online. Really excited to be here. It's been a lot of work over the last six months throughout this process, and we're excited to be at this point and hear your input. Like the General Manager alluded to, Your Metro, The Way Forward is ultimately the North Star for the organization. This document will guide our day-to-day decision-making, which are a lot of decisions, and really quick and fast, but also helping us, help ground us in that long-term strategy of really identifying where we want to be and who we want to be as an organization that serves the greater region. Next slide, please. Do I have a clicker? Sorry. Excellent. Okay. Together with the Board of Directors, senior staff, and the entire organization, along with our customers, work together to develop a robust and customer-centric strategic plan. You see these elements around the screen here. We're all different ways that we drew input to help shape the format of the plan, but also to tell us how we're going to move forward together as an organization in our community. We conducted surveys from the community and our staff to develop a baseline framework, so that, as General Manager Clark mentioned, we're going to be measuring our progress, and so we need to identify a baseline, looking at performance data to help us improve service, and also help us develop tools, both internally and externally, to deliver better service for our customers. Looking at social media data while understanding that Twitter and Instagram can be a bit of an echo chamber, that it's important to understand the sentiment online, to help us navigate decision-making from a day-to-day basis. Also, conducting interviews across the organization and with our customers to understand people's experience in the moment, our systems, but also what their tenure has been like with Metro and how we can better serve them. Conducted several workshops with our board and senior staff separately, but also together. This helped us establish a framework for how we wanted to develop the strategic plan, but also coming together as one Metro and identifying a framework of working together as one team moving forward. Also, looking at prior studies and reports that Metro has done in the past, a strategic plan is a regular practice, a best practice for our industry. But it's also important to make sure that we're reflecting on the past plans to see where we may have missed the mark, but also how we can improve and set targets differently to work forward. And then lastly, staff forums. We have an ongoing basis, meeting regularly across the enterprise to understand how everyone in the different departments work on a day-to-day basis, but like General Manager Clark alluded to, how we can better work together to really reach the vision and the mission that we identify in the plan. Next slide, please. You see up on the screen here, the framework of the plan and what we're asking for input from the community is to really help us make sure that we have identified the mission, vision, and goals, that were all developed directly from the input that we received over the last six months, but ultimately grounded in the framework of our core values, which are, sorry, I'm going to have to flip my notes, I can't see the screen. But that Metro is innovative, Metro is safe, Metro is equity-focused, customer-centric, and ethical. And so, as you read through the robust plan, everything is grounded in those five core principles, and then have really helped shape how we develop the goals and objectives, and then ultimately, the initiatives and metrics that were developed to measure our progress against the plan. Community engagement was a critical element, as we mentioned, to develop this plan. Met with thousands of customers and staff over the last six months in various forums to make sure that what we were capturing was accurate and reflected the needs of everyone in the community. We met with over 100 government partners and stakeholders and advocacy groups in the business community to also make sure that Metro is serving their needs and that we can all work together to create the Metro that the region needs and deserves. Ultimately, the plan progress is going to be driven by initiatives that are assessed through clear metrics and targets. So, developing initiatives that will be implemented by staff, and then, like General Manager Clark mentioned, is reporting out on that progress, so the good, the not-so-good. But that helps us identify where we need to identify more resources, more time, more effort, to ultimately deliver more service and deliver better service. So, you'll see in the plan that we've identified example initiative programs that we'll be implementing over the next, some are already underway, but some will be over the next few years. And then those metrics and identifying the targets of what we anticipate to be meeting, and then reporting out on those initiatives and metrics regularly. Some will be weekly, some will be daily, some will be annually. But again, just really being transparent and honest about where we are, how we're doing as an organization, to deliver better service and create a better customer experience. In conclusion, we're really excited to get to the next phase of this, which is implementation. This is, you know, not a plan that's going to be sitting on a shelf somewhere, but an active plan that we will be coming back regularly. As we start to implement several initiatives, we'll be developing action plans and how we'll be reporting out on our progress against each of those, and how they tied to the strategic plan. And then, of course, in the next few years, be reflecting and coming back with the next one, but really just excited to have this document ready and activate it in the next few months and next few years.
Thank you, Ms. Feldbauer. I'll briefly recap the procedures that will follow this evening again as we accept comments. But before I do that, I'd like to thank Kate Matisse, the Executive Director of the NBTC, and her staff for having us here this evening and helping coordinate with the Metro staff, getting this all together. So, thank you, Kate, and the staff that's here with Kate tonight. So, let's onto the procedures. Again, as a reminder, we'll be alternating between three ways that we're accepting comments tonight: in person, via Zoom, and over the phone. For those of you here in person, you can start making your way towards the podium once your name is called. However, if you need a microphone, please raise your hand, so we can see you, I can see you, and we'll bring one to you. For those of you who are preregistered or joined via Zoom, we'll ask you to remain muted with your camera off until you're called upon to speak. Once you're given that, once you're given your testimony, you can log off Zoom or watch the hearing on YouTube. And for those of you participating via phone in the speaker's queue, when it's your turn to speak, we'll announce your phone number, and we'll receive, and you'll receive an automatic message indicating it's your turn to speak. And again, you can push star three to get in the speaker's queue on phone. Elected officials will be given five minutes. Everyone else will be allowed three minutes. Extra time will be given for translation if needed. We have a timer that will count down how much time you have left to speak. We will give you a warning beep with 20 seconds left, and, you know, I'll do some judgment on my own. The timer is important because we have a lot of folks that do want to speak tonight, so we ask that you kindly respect the time limits. And with that... Oh, are we providing testimony? Okay, we're going to review that now? Okay. So, in addition to the opportunity to speak at this evening's meeting, Metro also welcomes written comments on the proposed changes. For those of you here tonight, or listening on YouTube or watching after on YouTube, further written testimony may be submitted and must be received by 5:00 PM on Tuesday, February 14, 2023. Testimony can be submitted online at wamada.com/strategicplan. Online, you can enter free-form testimony, or upload letters, or other documents. You can also mail testimony to Office of the Secretary, S E C two E WAMADA, Post Office Please reference "strategic plan" in the subject line. This testimony must be received, not postmarked, but received by February 14, 2023, in order to be included in the hearing record. Your comments will become part of the public record that will be reviewed by the Metro Board of Directors. Changes to the project presented here tonight may be proposed in response to testimony received and subsequent staff analysis. Now that we have all the background and our required wording out of the way, we'll now turn to our first witness. We'll begin with those on Zoom tonight, and then we'll go through those joining in person and via phone, until everyone who wants to provide testimony has had the opportunity to do so. And our first speaker this evening is David Snyder. David is a council member from the City of Falls Church. Hi, David. If you could mute your phone, David, just in case? Are we getting...
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we can hear you just fine, David. Good evening.
Thank you very much.
David, David, if you could hold on just one moment. Okay, we had two competing. Okay, sorry, David, we had, I think we had two competing recordings going on at the same time. So, you can go ahead and start again.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me okay?
Perfect.
Thank you so much. The City of Falls Church is the smallest Metro compact jurisdiction. We're honored to be part of the Metro system from the very beginning. My comments tonight are extremely brief. First of all, I think your strategic plan is very well thought out. We much appreciate the approach that you're taking and the process that you're following. From the standpoint of the City of Falls Church, I think the most important things for my constituents are safety, reliability, and convenience, especially with regard to the East Falls Church and West Falls Church stations, and a couple of the bus lines that are running through the City of Falls Church. So, just to reemphasize the importance of safety, we appreciate it very much, the comments that were made earlier about the tragic events of last week, and what we can all do to prevent them from ever recurring again. So, in conclusion, thank you very much. We appreciate the strategic plan. The focus on safety, reliability, and convenience is very important to us, and we will certainly work with you to figure out how we fund Metro going forward without more of an impact on local government budgets. Again, thank you for the great work, and we hope things go really, really well in the future for Metro.
Great. Thank you, David. Nice seeing you tonight. Next will be David Turnham. Mr. Turnham? Sorry about that. Next will be Sherry Mahaby. Sherry, are you with us? I saw your name.
Hi.
Hi, how are you? Now, we can hear you just fine. Oh, there you are.
Thank you so much. Thanks for the opportunity. I'm Sherry Mahaby, a resident of Montgomery County for over 40 years, and I appreciate Metro for connecting me to school when I was in my twenties, and later, my transportation service, work of use, and then being able to do homework and catch up on my news while dash across town. And now, as an employer of the transportation providers, providing service to parent transit customers for the past 20 years, the WAMADA partnership saved our employees, riders, and companies to remain, upload during the COVID years. We currently offer public transportation services with on-demand and shared ride services at the Washington Metro Region with employees and contractor drivers that use connected vehicle technology and data that planners can need to have for superior strategic planning and service planning. One of the outcomes of being the service provider for WAMADA was understanding the pain points and patent software technology for managing demand response service with communication and connected vehicle technologies. So, what we developed, currently, the world, developing world, is enjoying giving way to following the missions such as reducing vehicles in service in Montgomery County from 700 vehicles to 170, by finding the closest rider to the right provider. Travelers' interactivity tools that can facilitate transfers with connected planning across modes of service, making riders' lives easier and transit to increase its ridership. The outcome of the connected vehicle technology is the transparency that drivers need for hands-free communication on the road and other products. The drivers' riders' communication technology segment is in the early stage in vehicle manufacturing and will become focused in the next decades. For example, most vehicle manufacturers rely on existing common parts for mechanical interior looks. In some features, the car manufacturers try to differentiate products with specialized software, logic, control of people, efficiency of batteries used in power, motor strength, and so forth. The transit and transportation industry, as well as providers of roads and infrastructure, will also need to instigate the segmentation of research and development. For example, the connectivity of vehicles, different resources are allocated to communicate with additional resources, with travel segments, for example, connecting technology for individual riders versus cargo management versus public transit and public transportation. IDC is positioning, it's, IDC being the software company I'm talking about, is positioning its research and development and plan to specialize in public transit and public transportation for passengers and the management. In our view, public transit and transportation are among the most important and impactful areas of using connected technology.
Sherry, if you could just wrap up another 30 seconds, please.
If you're available, it would be convenient to provide any additional data and support. We really appreciate being part of the state of the union.
Okay. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Next, we have Kelson Nisbet.
Hello, com check, can you hear me?
We can. Good evening.
All right. Hey, my name's Kelson Nisbet. I live in Prince George's County. I live closest to the West Heightsville Metro, and I use the Metro pretty much every single day. I work at a five-sided building across the pond halfway in DC and Arlington, Virginia. So, once again, I use it all day. I'm looking forward to the Yellow Line coming back up, so thank you for laying out the strategic plan and all the different initiatives, and the different opportunities to get back and forth and commute with Yellow Line being down. The one thing I do want to say is that I'm also looking forward to the action plans, more particularly where you mentioned in Objective 3A, where you speak about service optimization and alignment. Just a little bit more data on that, and fidelity would be great. I just want to make sure that there's not going to be any services that's going to be impacted here at this location. So, thank you very much. I'm a relatively new resident. I moved here from LA, and I love, love, love this Metro system. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kelson. Okay, that's, I believe that's it. I'll do one quick check. That's it for the Zoom queue? Okay. Next, we'll go to in-person. Mr. Stephen Kenny, who is an ANC Commissioner from the District of Columbia and 1A05. Mr. Kenny? Next, Matthew Bradfield, also an ANC Commissioner, Commissioner from SMD 4C07. Good evening.
Good evening. Just want to say, thank you very much for the work y'all are doing. Compared to the dark ages that was the pandemic, the system is getting better, and I appreciate all the work y'all are doing. Let me just start by saying that the overall plan you presented, you know, with your goals, is a great plan. It's a good framework for how Metro should be going forward, but there are some areas of disagreement I have with regards to the details, specifically regarding sustainability. Metro's plan for electrification, electrification of the buses is a great idea, specifically the Northern Bus Garage becoming an electric-only facility is, it's not in my SMD, but it's very, very close, and I know the residents very much appreciate not having to deal with diesel fumes. However, battery electric buses compared to trolley buses, in my opinion, represents a bit of a missed opportunity, specifically regarding the capacity issues, the cost involved, and various other factors that make me believe that Metro is missing an opportunity with regards to electrification. Trolley buses seem like an old technology, but they are still being iterated upon in cities around the world and closer to home in Seattle and San Francisco. They are nowhere near as constrained as they once were. They have significant off-wire capabilities, and I believe that if we were, if Metro was to work with the jurisdictions, DC, Northern Virginia, Maryland, to electrify the most prominent routes, 14th Street, 16th Street, it represents an opportunity to electrify at a lower cost, maybe not at lower cost in terms of infrastructure, but definitely in terms of operations and bus procurement. And again, I just feel that battery electric buses, they're somewhat of an unproven technology. There's limitations when it comes to cold weather. It feels like not enough thought is being put into it. Another area of... Another area of the strategic plan that I have comments on are regarding fare evasion. Definitely believe that fare evasion is something that gets overblown a bit, but it is a problem that needs to be addressed. But I feel that the highest priority should be infrastructure rather than, you know, confrontational enforcement. It disappointed me that the new fare gates that were installed over the past year, two years, were not in any way different as far as the overall design. They're still as easy to jump over. They're still as easy to push aside. I feel that Metro really should have looked into other cities, other jurisdictions. London is a good example with saloon-style doors, and I definitely appreciate the Fort Totten demonstration program that y'all had for, I guess, a couple of days, maybe a week, I don't know. It definitely feels like if the, it definitely feels like an opportunity that people are taking advantage of, where if the opportunity is removed through physical intervention rather than a transit cop saying, hey, you can't do that, I'm going to hassle you over this, it would result in less of a fare evasion problem. Let's see. One other area of the strategic plan I want to comment on is the monetization and/or sustainability financially. The Metro is a great example of transit-oriented development, but it's also an example of really bad land use. You know, here in Northern Virginia, it's great. The Orange Line is a national example. It's a world standard. But if you go out to the outlying stations like Greenbelt or West Falls Church, it's a parking lot or a garage, and that's it. I feel that Metro is missing an opportunity here for developments similar to Hong Kong's MRT, where Metro owns some of this land, and they can develop it into housing, especially affordable housing, mixed-use developments as far as retail and grocery stores, that kind of thing, where Metro is generating a revenue stream that's not just fares and the contributions of the constituent partners. It is happening, but in my opinion, it should be happening faster. And I believe that about covers it. Again, really appreciate y'all's work that you do and all, especially Mr. Clark. As a former Austinite, I definitely appreciate the work you did on Project Connect. I really hope that gets expedited, but I will leave it there. Thank you very much for y'all's time.
Thank you, Matthew. Appreciate it. Next, Dinah Passman. Ms. Passman? Okay, we'll come back to some of these in case people come in. Howard Marks. Mr. Marks?
Omkar Joshi.
Good evening.
Hi. My name's Omkar Joshi. I am a student at GW over my second year. Pretty much what I have to say boils down to like four main things. Safety, building a better network, raising worker pay, and community presence being strengthened. So safety, it means like putting a barrier, to me at least, between the track and the platform so people can't just, you know, be pushed or, you know, end up on the tracks as easily. I feel like that's a long-term cheaper solution, just Plexiglas instead of like several cops. Building the network, it's a lot. The big things, I think, would be planning for a loop line at some point, you know, connecting all the places along the Beltway, express service, especially on the Silver Line to Dulles, and expanding that tunnel for Roslyn. And also I have a U-Pass, so that doesn't necessarily get me around on the ART or the Fairfax Connector. I noticed in the strategic plan, you know, that was a goal. I'm here to just, you know, support that, especially on behalf of fellow students. Also, making the buses in the metro 24 hours would really help fellow students like me because sometimes, you know, we want to be out at like 3:00 AM, but that's also just a personal thing. Third factor, I feel like raising worker pay and offering more competitive retirement benefits, especially for like a DB pension plan, would really help attract more talent. And my final factor is connection to the community. Following the Japan railways example, building your own demand would really help, you know, shore up some of Metro's finances and strengthen community presence and, you know, strengthen the pulpit that Metro already has. Boston's a great example of what you can do, so I would love to see that happen in more outlying places like Falls Church, Greenbelt, places that are pretty much just parking lots. Also, electrification, I feel like solar panels on those parking lots for now, they would really help with, you know, connecting people to stops while also, you know, charging the bus. Also, increasing bus frequency, especially, you know, how it was cold like a week ago. People can't be waiting out for like 15 minutes between buses. And the wheelchair accessible gates, I feel like there need to be more of them. Disabled people use Metro too. And the last point is this input process should have been longer. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Omkar. Next, Mr. Scott Brandon. Good evening.
My name is Scott Brandon. I've been in Arlington for 30 years. I understand with Community Resources of America. I'm about this to show you. It's a little teddy bear called I Have A Bear for some care. My objective was to give bears to emergency rooms, free of charge if a young person comes in, like a broken arm, a cut, or anything. And with the news today about the Metro Police and DC Police joining, they may have some bears for kids on the Metro, anywhere in DC. And of course, pictures always get people's hearts, so we got pictures of kids with bears. Second division or section of my talk is about the virtual trademark I have. I put it together before COVID. It's called PASS. It's a virtual trademark. Public art design. Our dream was to have these little metal signs and fix them to bust some bus stop holes. And my pitch is that we were going to try to do something called the 10% Factor, that I would, you know, be putting this all together with like 10% from my nonprofit. And with Kayla, my wife, she died on January 24th, 2022, she rode Metro Access every day. And so that 90%, you know, could go to Metro Access. I understand also the capillary food map. May I have permission to write you some information about this? Thank you, Mr. Clark. Thank you. Any questions or anything?
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you very much. Anybody want to add?
Thank you, Scott. Next, we have Mr. Mike Golash. Michael?
My name's Mike Golash. I'm a resident of the District of Columbia. I've been a Metro employee. I'm retired, and I've been a pretty consistent bus and rail rider for many, many years. The first issue is, if you think about the history of transit in this region, up until the 1960s, the early 70s, it was basically a private operation. But those companies went bankrupt or on the verge of bankruptcy. So the federal government, the local government stepped in and decided we're going to have a unified transit system run by the government. All the private companies were taken over. The rail was opened up. The buses in '73, the rail in '76, and we had a very good system. But in the process, some of the local governments decided to take more of an individual approach rather than a collective approach to public transit, and began to set up their own bus companies. So that started, and then in the middle of 1990, we had the Regional Mobility Panel, which basically said, okay, there's two types of buses. There's regional buses, which Metro will operate, and there's local buses, which the local jurisdictions at their own option can operate. And that led to a tremendous expansion of the private bus, of the private, of the local bus companies operated by private operators. So Fairfax Connect or RideOn, Dash, ART, Q-Bus, you name them, the circulator in Washington. So now we're at another period where we have all these different bus companies going in many different directions. It's hard to figure out the schedules one from the other, and there's no, it's really a disaster in terms of good service for the riding public. We need to abandon that approach, restore the idea of one unified transit system run by the authority with good pay for workers, good jobs, good benefits. That'll solve a lot of our retention problems and will also, I think, for the long run, a much more effective process. The second issue is the question of funding. We talk about fare evasion, but let's be realistic. Who are the real fare evasors? It's the developers and businesses who have, whose businesses and development have generated literally billions of dollars for them by the services that we provide. They do not pay their fair share. Rod Green, who's a professor of economics at Howard, 30 years ago did a study of the value created by transit systems relative, and businesses relative to their distance from subway stations and bus service, and how much money was generated. So all those studies have been done. These guys are getting away with robbery the way they treat our transit system. We talk about subsidies from the local government. It's not a subsidy. It's a payment for services that we provide. And we should get, we should change the language so people understand that. These governments have to pay for what they want, and they refuse to do that. The question about, the question about retention and problems of the shortage of drivers and mechanics, basically if you treat them better. I mean, basically in 2010, there was a big push by the authority to eliminate retiree health insurance from the workforce. That has basically made this a much less desirable job than it was 20 or 30 years ago. When I came to Metro in the 70s and 80s, it was very rare, I'll be done in 30 seconds, very rare that anyone retired, that anyone left or quit for a better job. We see that happening all the time now, so we've got to change the way we treat our workforce and the benefits and wages we provide them if we're going to have a solid, stable workforce. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Next, Yuri Barofsky.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Yuri Barofsky. I actually wrote a kind of a scathing speech here trying to compare Metro L here in the capital of the wealthiest nation in the world and my hometown of Kiev, Ukraine, where I relied on public transit as a member of a family who never owned a car. It was really hard to get to the Metro, but once I knew I'd get to the Metro, it would get me on time and fast where I need to go. And I was going to go into detail of that and try to chew you guys out. And then I met Mr. Randy in a hallway here, and he was most generous, honest, and just a lovely person who seems to really understand what's wrong with the Metro. So I'm going to cut down my remarks to three points here. First, fare evasion. You know, I live at Morgan Metro Station, and by my count, probably one and third don't pay. And while it is not a behavior I want to condone, it's a behavior I can't judge. Because if it is cheaper for me and my partner to drive to downtown DC, pay 15 bucks for parking, and pay $3 for cheap American gasoline, we drive, we don't drive F-150. And we have to pay almost 20 bucks to get to Metro, we're going to drive. You know why? Because I can also control the radio and not have to listen to someone else's radio out loud on the train. So Metro can't be that expensive. It shouldn't be cheaper for two people to drive than for two people to take the train. Secondly, land use, gentleman already talked extensively about it. Our Pringeris County guilty, the charge, our planning people, they're going to put an AutoZone car, parts store within one mile from the Metro Station. That's not a good use of the zoning. Yeah, sure, zoning code, all legal, bad idea. I hope you can redevelop your Metro lot. Half of my walk to the Metro is just your parking lot alone. And finally, work culture. I have to say, wow, I'm sure a lot of great employees. We just saw a heroic act. Amazing, just amazing. A lot of employees, I don't know if they have a sense of pride, and again, as part of my earlier remarks, I'm going to try to kind of steer that a little bit, because when Ukraine had no salaries, no food, everyone went hungry in the 90s, the kind of economic collapse of this country had very few people alive in this country who have seen that. My friends compare me to like their grandparents from Great Depression. That's how I grew up. The Metro was running because people who worked for the Metro were proud to do their job because they did the job not for the paycheck, but they knew the whole city relied on those jobs. And when I come up and just make a polite remark to Fargate West Station Manager saying, hey, guys, so I get a little scooter here, and I'm trying to try, kind of like roll it on one wheel, kind of between the crowd, and there's a massive tool chest in the way, would you consider kind of like putting that tool chest somewhere? Because I've never seen it open. The manager, the station manager, kind of laughs at me, kind of smiles, kind of like, yeah, I don't know about that, mate. And then months, two months later, that shell's here, so I'm like with my scooter between other people. That's the kind of work culture that I don't know. And again, I don't want to chew on the specific individual. That's just the one example that I could bring up to your attention. So too expensive, I should not be cheaper to drive and park. Land use is not very good, and maybe like Japan, you could make revenue with that. And work culture, I hope we can improve. Thank you.
Thanks, Sherry. Next, Mr. Rob Whitfield.
Good evening. I'm Rob Whitfield. I'm a board member of the Fairfax County Taxpayers Alliance, and I've lived in Fairfax County since 1977, came here from New York City, and for a couple of years rode the Lexington Avenue subway. And I still well remember seeing the poor gentleman who lost his legs in Vietnam and used to come down the center aisle of the railcars on the IRT on a, what do you call it? Not scooter. Skateboard. And so when I came to Washington, Metro was brand-new, Metro Rail was brand-new. And I thought, wow. But over the last 40 years, I've seen it go downhill, and downhill, and downhill. And some of the original construction wasn't obviously designed for the long term, so they've had to go back and rebuild station platforms. And right now, the Yellow Line is closed under the Potomac River and across the bridge there. And it concerns me, I've heard obviously about the fact that they tried to save money on the Red Line in the area near Woodley Park, and so of course, it leaks like a sieve. I was a civil engineer. I actually worked one summer on the Victoria Line in London, and so I've been in the tunnels. I know what it's like. I've, for the last, I got involved with transportation primarily because of the Dulles Rail Project, for which I opposed the use of tolls. And that's led me subsequently to go to, since 2011, well over 100 Womata Board and Board Committee meetings, although I have to confess, since COVID-19, I mostly listen online. But I did, in the course of my trips to downtown, I rode with Dave Snyder a couple of times, Walter Ralcon. And so I know some of the people, and I haven't read all the elements of this strategic plan, but as Walter well knows, I've pushed for a couple of basic things. In 2012, a guy named Nat Bottenger, who was head of strategic planning, told me about the Roslyn Bypass. And Richard Salz, in 2014, then general manager, said, yeah, we could build 3/4 mile tunnel between Courthouse and the Arlington National Cemetery Station. When Amazon HQ 2 was announced in 2018, I testified the following week to the Womata Board about the need to complete the Roslyn Bypass link. I have never heard anything back from Womata on this matter. Instead, what we had was silver, Potomac River tunnel options, some of which would cost upwards of $50 billion. Salz told me that they could do the Roslyn Bypass for $2 billion. And then, of course, when demand warrants, you can go another link from south of the cemetery, under the parking lot of the Pentagon, and connect to the Yellow Line on the 14th Street Bridge. That could be done for probably less than a billion. So what I want to see is some attention to cost feasibility in your strategic planning process. The finances, you haven't raised the fares more than 1% a year, if that, in the last 10 years. Cheyenne Kaya spoke at the Council of Governments TPB in 2018. Expenses had risen 8% a year, I don't know, it was a five-year period. But the point is, if you're not raising revenues from your fares at the same rate that you're raising your expenses, clearly, we're not going to get a resolution of the long-term needs of Womata. I would be glad to help you all. I will try and put something in writing for next week, and I have some handouts to give people if they want.
Thank you, Rob. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak? We'll have to capture your name after, but you have a couple of minutes? Yeah? Yep. Please state your name and, yep.
My name is Carl Rabbin. I just came to listen to things. And I see people are always talking about their pets' things or whatever. But all I can say is I've noticed a lot of things are a lot better with Metro lately in the last year or so. The drivers seem much calmer, the bus drivers, really. I see them going through like crazy people and they're always calm. And I know, you know, what else could I say about it? And oh, and some of the routes have been changed around to be much, sometimes they're more intelligent and sometimes maybe they're trying something and it's not going to work. One that I think is a great idea is when the Wisconsin Avenue and Pennsylvania Avenue lines were separated, there's one Wisconsin Avenue line that goes right to the center of town and there's just two Pennsylvania Avenue Southeast lines that stop right at the State Department. I mean, instead, there used to be six lines, some stopped downtown, some went all the way to Southeast Washington, they were never on time. It was really unclear, even there was a time when there was the 33 and the 31. And they realized, nobody took the 31, they all transferred to the 33 right before it ended. So they got smart. Now there's just the 33. I know I'm just talking about real specific things, but it's an idea of how some things are really smart. I see the metroway line in Arlington and Alexandria, it's really nicely built, but it hardly ever runs. It seems like nobody rides it that much. I mean, something, it's a smart idea, bus lanes, the way they have them downtown and this metroway that runs through Route 1 in Arlington, but I think it was overkill. I don't know that it's used that much. And in other words, some things are done really smartly, some things, you know, I don't want to need to discuss the real specific lines that I happen to pay attention to. But once I retired and started going down to do volunteer work at the Smithsonian, I realized it seems better than it used to be. I don't know, I guess that helps. Oh, one other thing I would say, as long as I'm talking about kind of random topics, the parking garages are almost empty all the time. They used to be almost full. I lived near the Glenmont Station and I used to go there and, you know, you'd have to get close to the top to pay once they built the second garage. And 520 seemed like that was the right price. Now nobody shows up. If you lowered the price, maybe to $3, $3.50, it might generate enough more people riding Metro, even though it's only $1.50 a day, it might make people, you know, just enough people think to themselves, I am, it's worth it. Because that's, because like if I, while you senior citizen stuff, if somebody thinks to themselves, I have to go downtown, $6 to get downtown each way plus $5 for the garage, that's over $20. If it seemed more like just $18 total, it might seem a little more pleasant for people. So while a lot of things are real good, there's a few things that you could tweak, but my personal opinion is things are run pretty well now.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Different from the others sometimes.
All right. That's okay. All right. We have no one in the phone queue and no one else on Zoom, John? Okay. So we'll conclude our testimony tonight and as a reminder, we will be accepting written testimony until 5:00 PM on Tuesday, February 14th, 2023. Testimony can be submitted online at WMATA, W-M-A-T-A dot com forward slash strategic plan, and strategic plan is all one word. Testimony can also be sent via US mail to Office of the Secretary, WMATA, S-E-C-T-2-E, P-O-V-O-X, 44390, Washington DC, 20026-4390. All mail testimony must be received, not postmarked, by 5:00 PM on Tuesday, February 14th, 23. As a reminder, a video recording of this hearing will be posted on YouTube at the youtube.com forward slash Metro Forward channel. If you would also like to view or to help you with written testimony, which again, must be received by Metro by 5:00 PM on the 14th. Thank you again for participating in this evening's hearing and have a good night.